All right, so we'll go ahead and call to order the May 27, 2020 Special Commission Meeting, and first we'll have prayer followed by a pledge of allegiance from our very own Sean Fletcher.
Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this opportunity to come together once again and gather and serve. We ask, Lord, that during this meeting you give the leaders the wisdom and the knowledge and the information that they need to make decisions that are in best keeping with the community that they serve. In your precious name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, so first up, we have a discussion regarding Governor Laura Kelly's Ad Astra plan to reopen up Kansas. J.D., do you have a copy of that?
I don't.
But...
Can I borrow yours? This one?
Sorry.
Well, I thought you...
I thought I gave you my notes already. Sorry about that.
That's okay. So, we've asked for recommendation from county admin, health office, or health officer, and our COVID response department heads. So, our county administration made up of county administrator and public information officer J.D. Gilbert, assistant county administrator Sean Fletcher, health officer Angela Sowers, COVID-19 response department heads with the emergency manager Rex Beamer, chief officer and fire VMS Rob Boyd, sheriff Bill Carr, communications director Elliot Link. And what we have is a recommendation, and I'll just read through this and we can discuss these, but the first one is for the county, for Ford County, to continue the following. Number one, provide statutory and necessary services and resources to Ford County citizens through contract tracing and possible enforcement of quarantine and isolation procedures. Gentlemen, I don't know, I can read the whole thing and we can come back to these, or if you want to talk about them one at a time. I'm good either way.
If you want to go through, Chairman, there'll be a couple that I'll take out afterwards if it's all right.
Yep, yep. Number two is provide non-congregate housing to the citizens of Ford County. Number three is to provide COVID-19 testing at the Ford County Expo Center. Number four would be to monitor Ford County health metrics for upward trajectory. Number five would be monitor local health systems for increased hospitalizations and/or deaths. Number six is retain the authority and ability to institute measures for Ford County to respond effectively to an increase of cases, hospitalizations, death, or stress on local medical community services and providers. And number seven is to observe and/or extend local disaster declarations. They also would like to continue the following, which is local businesses and community partners. Number one, use and engage Ford County as a resource and service for guidance, guidance in relation to COVID-19. And number two, if necessary, develop and institute restrictions specific to your business, event, et cetera, to best exercise individual control. They would also like to continue the following for individuals, maintain social distancing, wear face mask covers while in public, practice proper hand washing procedures, remain home if ill or exhibiting symptoms of COVID-19, remain home if you are high risk and/or have a chronic health condition, make efforts to limit your personal exposure. And government units in Ford County, number one, would like to develop plans to institute specific measures to best exercise home rule and local control. So those are the recommendations of county administration, health officer, and COVID response department heads.
Mr. Chairman, one second. We're going to call into the conference call.
Okay.
Next question.
Good?
Yep.
Okay. Okay. So commissioners, is there something we'd like to discuss on these recommendations?
So, I think as far as the recommendations for the county, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to point out that a lot of these that you have on here are things that we do.
That's it.
Anyway.
Right.
Whether we're talking about COVID or whether we're talking about
That's it.
monitoring maybe tuberculosis cases or something like that. Okay, so I think that's important to make that statement that so much of this is stuff that we do on an everyday basis with the health departments there. Number six, retaining authority and ability and institute measures in Ford County. It's my understanding of the public health board and having a public health official back here, that's really where all this, I think, should have been laid in the first place and not gone on to the more drastic measures and the higher levels of government kind of getting into this. I really feel like where we're at right now, with the government saying, with the governor saying, these are recommendations, we can use this as recommendations or guidelines, we're now at the point where it never should have gotten any further than to begin with. And that's my personal opinion on it. I'm happy that we're getting back to this point. I'm happy that the citizens of our county now have us, the county, to go to with, as far as being responsible for this and having us as a resource for them to come to with their questions and with their concerns, and that's great. I'd like to get, let's see, here another question. I guess for the local businesses and community partners. We have on here, continue the following, but these are still recommendations. I want to make that clear too. Is that right?
Correct.
You're recommending this?
Correct.
So... I don't know where we're going to go as a board on this, Mr. Chairman, but I don't feel, I mean, we can, I feel like we can encourage them to practice these safe measures and things like that, but I have a hard time getting behind mandating these kind of things for these private businesses.
Okay?
I think, I think it should be left up to each individual business owner to make the decisions in their, in their own office, in their own business, how best to serve their customers and safeguard themselves and their customers, and that, that needs to be there soon.
So how would you change one and two? Use and engage Ford County as a resource and service for guidance in relation to COVID-19?
I would encourage them to continue to use Ford County as a resource. Developing the restrictions specific to your business, make sure it's on their, on their account, not
Right.
not something that we are enforcing or mandating or it needs to be a voluntary deal on their part. I'd like to hear Angela talk. And that's with respect.
Okay.
Because you've been on the front line and seen all the problems, and then I certainly have not seen any problems because of where I'm at at the moment. But I want to hear you just try to go through this deal and tell us what you think.
Well, like where it says, continue the following for Ford County, those are measures and procedures that we already have in place, you know, and do have with communicable diseases either way, like Sean or Mr. Pastor said, regardless of the disease, those are some procedures that we do utilize. I will continue, like I always have, to monitor the disease spread, the hospitalizations, the deaths, the problems if there is any, you know, occurring in the community and help mitigate that, you know, if that's I can, which we've been doing, that'd be a very good job.
I think you're done, one.
Thank you. We do have a lot of, I think it's important that we say that we will continue to do the following for local businesses and community partners because they do reach out to us frequently.
Yeah.
Just for guidance, they don't want us to mandate anything, they just, you know, want to have a conversation, and a lot of times they're trying to develop policies and protocols for their own establishment, and they want some assistance with that. So I would encourage, you know, to continue the following for individuals, encourage it, not mandate it, or, you know, say you have to. And we'll continue to work closely with KTHG too, you know, on all the monitoring and disease surveillance and investigation and contact tracing. And the moment that we, I start to see that it's kind of becoming overwhelming or that we can no longer keep control of that, you know, we'll all reach out or I'll say something.
The testing out to the Expo Center, the number of people we're testing has been going down, is that correct? I go every morning and check how many cars are there. I go to the parking house and see how many cars are parked there.
Oh.
Every morning, that's my job, because I want to know personally. But it looks like to me that National is nearly up 100%. Looks like to me, by the number of people parked there, it looks like that Cargill might be down to probably operate at about 80%. That'd be my speculation, the number of cars parked there. But out there at the Expo Center, it looks like to me that the number of people getting tested, it gets less and less and less and less. Is that correct? I don't know. But I'm not there all day long.
The last week, that's a fair thing to say, yes, is that the testing has been decreasing the number of individuals for testing, but you have to remember they have to be symptomatic to be tested at the Expo since we're utilizing state resources. So, you know, there's some guidelines there that we have to follow in order to be tested. So that just means that during our contact tracing efforts, we're targeting those individuals who are symptomatic and need to go be tested, we're just not testing everybody, you know, regardless of their symptoms.
I see some, I see some cars there, coming, pulling in there without accounting tags. Is that because they work in one of the parking houses? Is that because if they come here? I don't understand. I don't know. I'm at, and I, I don't care. That's not my job to care, because I want everybody tested. I'm on Oklahoma side, Nebraska.
Sure.
And Ever County side, you know. But I see the deal down here, which tells about the number of tested in Ford County, and I wonder, some of them were talked about Ford County, and they actually were from Hutchman County or from some other county. I just wondered that, but I don't know.
Some, some of them are, and it would be, whenever we do that, it's because maybe they're a healthcare worker, or they work in a long-term care facility, and they work in a county who doesn't have access to a rapid test.
Thank you, thank you for explaining. I didn't understand that.
Yes.
I never thought about that.
And a lot of the traffic that's down there, it filters, you know, like through the health department, so we will know who is going there and, you know, not just everybody can just drive up and be tested, you know, there's some criteria and things like that.
So that's reading this all, give me the finger when I go.
Well, no, I don't know about that.
No.
Sure, what's the thumbs up?
That's not true. I just, I did try one that night.
Yeah.
Every now and then, you know, this is, there's nothing funny about this deal, but every now and then I got to make a joke. We got to have a grin on our faces about some.
Yeah.
And I think you're doing marvelous down there.
Thank you.
On the individual recommendations, words, maintain social distancing and wear face covers while in public, practice proper hand washing procedures, remain home if ill or exhibiting symptoms of COVID-19, remain home if you are high risk or have chronic health conditions, make efforts to limit your personal exposure. Couple others that maybe come up is maybe wash your face cloth, face mask or whatever your cover is
Sure.
daily, right? I mean, is that something you would?
Sure.
Okay. And then I didn't know if maybe continuing to watch CDC guidelines and recommendations. And I'd almost say that goes with businesses and individuals as well. I mean, because when you think about like individuals, I mean, I know a lot of people are going on the CDC site, looking at numbers, KTHG sites, looking at numbers, and, but then the recommendations and guidelines do change quite a bit. I mean, we've even talked about that, where you can literally click refresh and it's a totally different recommendation now. But I think that's important for people to continue to look over and observe. I don't know if there's anything else maybe that openly came out of discussions with the group that maybe was on the border or on the cusp of this, maybe got nixed, or if there's anything else you guys want to suggest or put in?
Not, not that I have, other than what's, what's up here.
Okay.
I think the main, the main thing that we got out of these conversations internally is that we're happy that we have a little bit of control back. You know, I've been talking to you guys about this separately as well. And basically, we didn't want to change anything we were doing, we don't want to change our relationship with the community partners, we don't want to change our reporting, et cetera. We just want to be able to change the fact that people have more control than what the governor was allowing in the first place.
Yeah.
And that doesn't change the fact that the community partners and the community in general are looking at us for guidance anyway. That doesn't change that.
Elaborate what your thought is there?
We're still, we're still the local authority.
Right.
And we're still the health department, and we still have the health officer, we're still responsible for pandemic response, for disease investigation, we're still responsible for all those things that hasn't changed. And it, I think, and we do, we think it's important, this group that we had a meeting about this, about to let people know specifically that we're still going to do these things. The governor hasn't changed that, or she's just changed the fact that we don't have to follow that Ad Astra plan if we don't want to.
Right.
And local businesses still can. She's still going to move through her phases, she's still going to work through that process, and it's still going to be available, and individuals can still follow it. You don't have to open if you don't want to, you can take 30 days to open, 60 days not, whatever you want to do.
Yeah.
I had actually gotten an email there drawing some attention to, say, tracing, the tracing process and that kind of thing, and expressing some lack of confidence about having that, you know, as an initiative in the county, and that we, you know, need to do away with that. But, you know, that's, that's a public health deal that we've, that we've had, it doesn't matter whether we're talking about this
Right.
or whether we're talking about chicken pox or the other.
Sounds a lot better.
But, and I think, I think that portion of it is really important to bring home to everybody is that we're back to doing our job because it's our job and not, and not because, and not, not feel like we're doing it under the governor's thumb, so it's great to, great to be back to this point, so.
I think
I'm pretty excited about it.
Yeah. I think one of those that's pretty important to note is just, you know, when we start looking at, I don't know if this is me echoing, when we look at, you know, the number of cases and you look at the test per thousand people, we're now at 141.6 people per thousand tested, and the next closest county is Seward at 102.9. We are testing a lot of people in this county. I think that goes back to even what Commissioner Snook was saying about other counties are coming here to get tested. I mean, I got tested, and the car in front of me was from Clark County, and it was a farmer, and you could tell, I mean, just with his flatbed truck and the way he was set up. I mean, it's, it's interesting when you see probably what's going through the Expo Center and the places, it's, there are lots of other counties that are there. I know personally of people from Fannie County that came here because they were told in Fannie County they weren't going to get tested, and they came here and got rapid testing. And I just think of the situations that are so different, and that family was positive. I mean, it's just, I just think it's interesting how open we have been to embracing everyone. And I think that's really a hats off to your team and, and the group that's here. But it is important for people to understand that we, we are tested at a high rate, and that's, 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 that's going to show different numbers than maybe somebody else who's not. I think we've talked about that a lot, but I just think it's important to continue to keep saying that. I mean, if you, if you only read social media, it's, it's a tough conversation to be part of. I mean, it seems like it's always one-sided, and they're not really thinking or understanding how much we're actually doing and how much investigation's really going on.
And I think there's a few out there to do too, that you know. And I mean, we had an email earlier from some of those folks too, that as, as they talk to colleagues around the state, have really bragged up our county about the response that we've had here, so. I know all of you have gone through a hell of a lot through all this, and you deserve to hear that. We certainly deserve to hear thank you from the commissioners, because we sure know, I mean, I don't think, I don't know what you guys have done. I'm sure not doing anything, except I do monitor the deal out during that, since my own curiosity, to give us something to do.
Sure.
But, you know, you all need to praise, because thank you is always welcome in anybody's life, and thank you very much. Thank you, gentlemen, all, girls, boys, everybody. Thank you very much. I, I thought we was going to come up here, and I thought I was going to have to be so difficult, and I am so glad that I sat here and heard what I heard.
Angela, if you can think of, I think the thing that we always get asked, I know that comes at us, is how do you calculate recovery rate with this pandemic that's out there? And I know there's different ways that people think about this. Is there a way that you think about this? Is there, do you take the number of deaths and you divide it by the amount of people that we've tested? Is it, is there a different way that you actually look at that number?
There's actually a way that we look at it, kind of like by the symptom onset date.
Okay.
So that makes a big difference when we're looking at recovery rate, and then with our contact tracing investigation. Then all that's put in kind of like a database that can give us some information and can tell us some information.
Yeah. And in your perception of Ford County's recovery rate, would you say that's, are we, are we recovering at a low rate? Are we recovering at a high rate? I kind of know this answer, but I was kind of just trying to see if there's, as a health officer, you would?
Well, we're recovering at a rate that, that we can manage, you know, so we have a stable recovery rate.
That's a very good answer.
The hospitalizations are not increasing, you know, yes, so.
Right, right. It's a perfect answer. Way to dodge that.
Yeah.
Well, I was, I was thinking on our paperwork, I mean, as we're looking at total number of deaths, which they're saying are eight, of course, everything's being chalked up to COVID, and total cases of 1,296, but yet we literally have a total cases of 1628. I mean, that is a very high recovery rate.
I think that's actually a methodology example, though, isn't it? Those aren't actual numbers.
Right.
I don't have the one you're looking at, because I didn't, I didn't get the copy.
We have 112, 96 cases.
Yeah, we have 1628.
1628.
But on a daily basis too, during our contact tracing, we can close those cases as they recover, and that will be reflected in KTHG's numbers also.
Okay.
So that's why it's important that we can still do the contact tracing and investigation, because then we can get that information to them also, that they can have to help us out.
So maybe I'm misunderstood, are, are these numbers relevant to Ford County?
I'm not sure what you have.
She doesn't have what you have this time.
Right. That's our total cases, I thought you were talking about these up here. What's the difference here?
It was, it was an example.
Okay.
Just an example, but I think that is correct on our total.
Is that still incorrect?
I believe our
1628, correct?
Yeah.
What about deaths? Should be eight.
Okay. Yeah. And these are COVID-related deaths, not necessarily deaths based on COVID.
Right.
Say that again.
It's not attributed solely to COVID.
Correct.
Those were complications.
Thank you.
Or complications with COVID.
Comp, yeah. Complications with COVID or COVID, yeah. Not necessarily did they pass away only because of COVID-19, that's not necessarily the case, they had some, some loss plus.
Yes.
Well, somebody my age with, with heart conditions, like I got, that's what you're talking about.
Yeah.
And they tested you, I think, were positive, so that would be related to COVID.
Right.
Let me tell you, if you tested me and I tested positive, my, you know, wall would be on the, well, attack me on the wall because she's going to kill me.
That's good humor right there.
I don't know what you, what you call that deal with mine.
Marriage.
There would be a, there was being mine, there'd be grass, and she'd be mowing it. This, this up here, it's an example of methodology, so, well, I thought that matched, but I, this over here didn't, so I didn't know.
So, any other questions for Health Officer Angela Sowers while she's here?
I don't.
I'll let her get in more comfortable seat.
Thank you.
Thank you, Angela, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep. So gentlemen, we have the official recommendation to the board of county commissioners in front of us. Any other discussion you want to do on this?
I haven't. So how do we go about adopting an official Ford County stance here?
Do we need it? Go ahead.
I think, I think the idea was is that you would, you would make a motion to approve these guidelines or recommendations as guidelines for Ford County.
Okay. And if we do that, could we add, under, continue the following for individuals, number seven, wash your face cloth or your cloth face mask daily? It's actually not even written. And number eight would be continue watching the CDC guidelines and recommendations. I mean, I think we just, for individuals, it's probably good just to continue that thought process.
You can just add that washing to number two as an and. You can just add that washing to number two as an and, and wash cloth face masks. And number seven, you can make it easier and say continue to follow bona fide COVID-19 recommendations from the county, state or federal, CDC, KTHG.
So number two would say wear face covers while in public and?
Wash daily.
Or ma, or maintain, maintain proper face covers, that would cover the whole thing. Because if you, if you don't have a, if you don't have a cloth face mask like Debbie's wearing, if that gets soiled, you're supposed to replace it.
Correct.
So we're not telling people to replace those. I mean, if we get too, if we get too deep into that, so.
So kinds of different procedures for different kinds of masks.
So that's why we just left it at the simple wear face cover, make sure you're wearing one and maybe follow proper procedures, I guess you could add there, depending on your face covering.
Okay. And what did you say, when I say continue watching CDC guidelines and recommendations? You dropped that to number seven?
Yeah, you could say number seven, just follow CDC, state and, and local guidelines regarding COVID-19 response or information, something along those lines. And continue to consult with your local healthcare provider.
Mr. Chairman, I only have one more question. Angela, if you have non-congregate housing, I forgot to ask this while you were up here, are we still utilizing some of, some of that? We have, okay.
Yes, my understanding is, and Rex can correct me if he knows something different, is that that may be available to us for another 30 days, they're going to ask for an extension so that can still be made available for, for the citizen, so, yes.
Okay, good. I see that it's at least being used. Some of these measures have been taken in construction and things like that that have gone on and never, never ended up being used, so.
Did you hear about, you're talking about the arena that they remade into a 52,000 housing facility and 8% was used? All the taxpayers were on the hook for that remodel and unremodel?
Right.
I mean, we really have been sold on a big pandemic. We've never felt the hospitals overran.
Right.
And, I mean, there, there is fear there, I mean, I mean, there, there is that. I mean, it is definitely, if you have a complication with that or something else, I mean, I've got that in my own family, so. All right. I make a motion to approve the official recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners from the County Admin, Administration Health Officer and COVID Response Department heads with these modifications that we've added to the form.
I would second.
And with the motion second, any other discussion on it?
I have none.
All right, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. We have nothing else on the meeting agenda. I make a motion to adjourn?
Second that.
Make a motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.